Where do they park?
Probably back there. Jen, we also have a few spots that are designated if somebody's there who doesn't belong. So no one ever going for a train or whatever will miss out because there's no space there for them. But on the generally, there isn't a problem with there being some space back there. While we don't specifically say you can park there between the commercial that are closed at various times, whatever. There generally is enough parking back there. Otherwise, I guess they would use a village, you know, the village parking if they were coming to be a guest.
And maintenance, are you planning to do any maintenance this year on that parking lot?
Well, having just purchased it in January, where and then this COVID issue hitting, but we're not, we're still looking at that. We've been maintaining it, the lot itself has some cracks in it, but we're, we don't presently have anything planned, although we will do ongoing, you know, normal maintenance, wear and tear. There aren't any potholes or anything back there. We do stay on top of that so that there's no potential for somebody walking through to be injured, but no major renovations planned. What is the usage for the shed there on the parking lot?
It's, it's a garage type structure. The, we currently use it for our property man. He kind of uses it for a little workshop that he's got to maintain the buildings. We, we also own the property across the street. What if years ago, 135 Main Street where Swell Taco is, which you're probably familiar with, what we have recently renovated apartments there. So he does maintenance on the buildings. We have another property down the block of 100 Fireline Avenue. So he uses that as like a little workshop, basically keeps the shop back and some tools there.
We also have cameras.
You have cameras?
We do have a camera for the parking lot.
Right, then there's a system within the garage. There's a side man door on the side facing the lot where there's those two handicap spots. And when you enter that, it's a security camera system there, which is connected through to the internet so we can log in if we have to.
That's good. Do you have dumpster?
Yeah, on the south side of the lot, there are three rollaway dumpsters. Yeah, I see you have your arrow.
Yeah, right around there. Right where it's at, Deer Park Avenue, there are three small rolling dumpsters. And as you may know, the existing entrances to this parking lot are rather narrow. So kind of the convenient place to put them. They believe they, they come in and pick them up like twice a week, Stephanie?
Yes.
So when they, do they roll them out to the street to pick them up?
I don't know, Steph, do they?
I, I believe they do. They come by extremely early, you know, like in the seven o'clock range when there's nothing out there. And they do because they really can't come in. The entrance is kind of narrow.
Kind of tight.
It's narrow.
Yeah, that, that's kind of a. There's two driveways there. And the narrowest one is on the north side between the house and that strike, correct? That's very narrow, so they barely get, I don't think they can get a truck through there. So the other side is the exit. So I roll, they roll them out through there and pick them up.
Okay, anybody else have any more questions?
No.
Nope.
So from a planning aspect, it fits our requirements. The, again, the application is for renewal of covenants, which are, would be set by the ZBA. So you'll get a letter of us, from us saying that we, it's conforming. But the covenants is you have to make an application to the ZBA for the final establishing the covenants.
I believe Stephanie's aware of that.
Yes.
Great. Does anybody else have any questions?
No, Jim.
No.
Okay.
All right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good evening.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Stay well also.
Stay healthy.
Yes.
Kevin, can you hear me?
Yes.
Do we have Mr. Perillo?
Yes, ready for him? Okay.
We can log off now, correct?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Before I add Mr. Perillo, if I could attempt to identify, there's two people calling in. The first one, five eight seven six two seven six, can you identify yourself?
That's an Eric Hall.
So can you say that again? There's feedback from the, from the meeting. Eric Hall?
Yeah.
Okay, gotcha. Okay, and the other attendee is six three one six one seven zero seven six eight. Can you identify yourself?
That's, that's all, cell phone.
Bethall, okay, so you're on the same application, I assume, right? Okay.
Correct.
Great, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna add Mr. Perillo now.
Perillo, how are you?
He is not in yet, still joining. There he is. So he's on video, he doesn't have audio yet. Mr. Perillo, if you can hear me, it's in your bottom left, there's a microphone icon. You need to press the arrow there to select the microphone. We have audio here? Not yet, he's just on video.
Mr. Perillo, you want to speak up?
He doesn't, he doesn't have an audio question yet.
Yeah, he probably can't hear us.
Perillo?
Nathan, I just, I just sent her a message on how to turn his audio on.
Right.
I'm going to send him back to be an attendee and add him as a panelist again and see if that resets and makes it easier for him. Okay, there he is. We got him. Mr. Perillo, you can hear us?
We can hear you.
Can you hear us, Mr. Perillo?
Can you give us a thumbs up if you hear us? Okay, we can hear you, so something's up with your microphone. It's good that you can hear us.
Mr. Perillo, in the bottom left where there's a microphone icon, press the arrow that's next to it. There should be an option to select a microphone.
He's on mute now.
There you go. Kevin. So if you click the, if you click the microphone, it mutes you, but there's an arrow next to the microphone.
A little arrow, like a little, just to the right of the microphone. If you click on that, it'll give you a menu option.
Kevin, can you, can somebody maybe log on with their phone and point to him as to what the screen might look like?
I think actually Paul, you know, Mr. Perillo might be able to join with a regular phone call and keep the video stream. Kevin, do you know what the phone number is for, for Mr. Perillo to join?
Pull it up right now, yep, hold on.
Mr. Perillo, do you have a regular phone line handy? Landline or a cell phone? Can you give us a thumbs up? Okay, we're gonna give you, we're gonna supply you with a phone number. If you just stand by a moment. Kevin, you can give me the phone number and I'll put it in a Word document and share it.
Well, do you want to, do you want to just write it down?
Yeah, I'm just gonna type it right now in a Word document and then share that on the screen.
Six four six. Five five eight. You know, I mean, I could, I could, I'll just share it right now.
Okay, go ahead. Yeah, that's fine, go ahead.
Mr. Perillo, you can see this number right here I'm highlighting. You can jot this down, phone number, the ID and the password.
So you would dial that number and it will ask you for an ID number. And then you would give the eight five seven number. And then it will prompt you for a passcode, you enter that as well. About them Yankees, huh?
Yeah.
Who's the new watching?
I know, I'm a Mets fan anyway, so.
They all end the same there.
Yes. At least they're not having a losing, losing season, so.
Getting back to hockey.
And they're tied for first, that's all I know.
Well, they're starting with the golf at the golf course next weekend.
That's right.
In both the women's and the men's league.
Now, do you golf, Judy?
Yes.
All right.
But the clubhouse is closed. You can't take the flag out of the hole. There's a lot of restrictions, we have to wear masks. You know, social distancing. So it will be interesting.
I guess it will be.
So Perillo, were you able to join on the phone or no luck?
Can he see us?
Yes.
Well, we do have questions, though.
Yes.
Can somebody take us, like I have a tablet and the, because it has a camera, the desktop on the tablet is much different than the desktop on the computer. Could somebody take a photograph of their computer and show them where to tap so you can maybe get audio?
I, we don't know what type of device he's on.
We can't talk to him.
Well, he can hear us, ask, we could ask, does he have a tablet or a computer or thumbs up?
Mr. Perillo, can you hear us? Yes.
And you were not able to join via the phone? That didn't work? Oh.
You don't have him muted, do you?
No, he's not muted.
Okay.
It's just a microphone issue. Miss Perillo, again, using a thumbs up, are you, you are able to go to the arrow next to the microphone icon in the bottom left?
Well, can we ask him questions and he could go thumbs up or thumbs down?
Nothing.
You know.
Does he know Morse code?
Mr. Perillo, do you have the, on the bottom of your screen, is there a chat icon there? Little thought bubble, says chat. If you find it, give me a thumbs up. Okay, if you click on that, you should be able to, if you type anything in there, it'll go to all the panelists that are on here. And communicate that way. If you can let us know what's going on, if there's, what the microphone issue is, or if you want to proceed without it. Could communicate via the chat, I mean, it's obviously up to the board. All, all new, all new world.
I think we're gonna have to move on, Kevin.
Yep.
Well, can we ask him a few questions?
Stuff from you, Jim?
Yeah, I'm just sharing that, make it a little easier for him to see possibly.
We don't know the reason why, but he said it wasn't working for him.
Okay.
We're gonna have to move on, we're gonna.
Okay, I'm gonna, I'm gonna put him back as attendee.
Yes.
Perillo, if you can hear us and you believe that you figure out your audio issue, if you want to send me a message via the chat, I can add you back in. Otherwise, we'll, we'll move on. Okay.
Four fifty Far Island Avenue, the Keith, do you well?
We do not have, we do not have Keith at this point.
No, no Keith, so.
No Keith and no Danica.
No Danica, okay. So let's move to two thirty eight Deer Park Avenue, though, Market.
We have two representatives, Francis Biero and Ben Paladino, we add them both in now.
Okay. Hello.
Francis.
How are you? Okay. Is there someone else we're waiting for?
Ben is the architect, the engineer who put the plan together. So I think he was gonna join by phone. I think he's just on mute.
Hi, could you just give me your name with correct spelling?
Yes, it's Francis, F R A N C E S.
Yes.
Last name Beiro, B E I R O.
E E I R O, okay.
And my husband Jose, same last name, J O S E, and then last name B E I R O.
So we'll just start with some information quickly. The number of seats in your restaurant?
Thirty eight.
Thirty five.
You supply wait service with that?
Yes.
Francis, just to clarify, thirty eight is what we're going for right now.
Oh, thirty eight is what we're going for, okay. We have thirty eight.
Thirty eight, okay. Okay. And your hours of operation when you do finally open?
Our hours of operation were from ten to nine.
Ten to nine.
Seven days a week?
Seven days?
No, Monday, Sunday, Mondays and Tuesdays, we close at eight.
Sunday, Monday and Tuesday.
Yeah, ten to eight and then it was.
Eight, okay.
And you're open seven days, so it's, it's Saturday.
Yes, but we won't be, we'll be closing now on Mondays.
Friday also.
So when do we go with the new schedule? What's the new schedule?
So we've been closed now for two months. So we're, we're, we're planning on reopening on June fourth for curbside and delivery. And also for the market.
So what will, when you eventually open as a restaurant, what days of the week will you be open?
It will be Wednesday through Sunday. I'm sorry, Wednesday through Monday. We would be closed on Tuesdays.
We close Tuesdays?
Yes, we'd like.
And what would the hours be? Ten to?
Ten to nine. Meaning that the last seating is at nine, that the last person coming in to eat is at nine.
Yes.
Yeah.
And will you ever want to open on Tuesdays?
Ever? I, right now, we've been opened since May of two thousand and eighteen. And we decided that the best day for us to close is on Tuesdays.
Okay, so.
For the foreseeable future, no, we don't see that we, that's gonna be our day of rest.
Number of employees?
Twelve.
Twelve, sorry.
All at the same time, or is it?
No, we have five.
About eight at the same time.
We have five full time and then the rest are part time, they're wait, wait staff, they're college kids.
So that'd be seven wait staff.
Yeah.
And how many do you have per shift?
Wait staff or total?
Employees, total employees.
So one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Seven.
Seven. And on an evening shift during the day before dinner, we have one wait staff. So it's between six and seven.
Good.
We need the certificates for the grease trap.
Right. Parking for your employees, what do you do for that?
They have the public, the, the parking behind rumors, the public Babylon parking.
So with the Chamber of Commerce?
Yes. Actually, two employees, one lives above Gino's, one lives above our store. Two of the full time. And the wait staff commutes from North Babylon. And Eddie and I both have parking behind the building.
And you, so. One spot back there for you guys?
We have two.
Two parking.
Yes.
So with your kitchen, you're required to have a grease trap, approved grease trap from Suffolk County Fountain Health of the Sewer District?
Correct.
You have that paperwork or?
That's what we're submitting today.
You're submitting that today?
Yeah, so what happened is that we've opened up under the Department of Agriculture, monitored by the Department of Agriculture, when we first established because of the market. It ended up that the, when we went through our final year audit, our people in Babylon like to eat out more than they like to cook at home. And so the restaurant portion of it has taken off more so than the market, although the market has done very well. And so Suffolk County and Department of Agriculture have said, you're, you know, you're gearing more towards the restaurant. And so these are the, you're going to be governed by Suffolk County. So before that happens, we thought we would put things in motion in place to get everything in order.
So the grease trap's installed already or just waiting for? Where do you stay with that?
No, we need to install a grease trap.
You did or you didn't?
We did not.
Okay, but it's going to be installed.
Correct. Okay, that's what we're submitting the plans for.
Yeah, the, right now, the, our course of action is planning board approval in order to get Board of Trustees approval. In order to then get a building permit to take care of what we need to take care of, which is installing a grease trap and some other minor changes to the interior of the building, which is upgrading of one or two appliances and upgrading the three compartment sink to get code compliant with the Department of Health.
Okay.
So it probably would be good to submit the plans for those upgrades too.
We have.
Yeah.
They're included.
And who has that, the building inspector's office?
So right now, we've submitted just the planning board set, which is the site plan and the schematic of the floor plan. But once we get planning board approval and Board of Trustee approval, we will submit a full set to the building department in order to get a building permit, which will show everything that is being changed. Our understanding was planning board review and approval was for the site plan changes, which is for the grease trap and the freezer. If you want to share my screen, because that's kind of not the.
Or mine, I can share my screen also.
Yeah, I have the PDF that I can kind of show of the site plan, which is where we're gonna put the grease trap and the exterior, the outdoor walk-in freezer location.
Could you email that to me?
Outdoor walk-in.
Yes, which we have.
Email that PDF to me?
Yes, and who is speaking, I'm sorry?
That's Jim over here.
Yep. If you can share your email in the chat, I can send that over your way.
Okay, I'll do that, hang on a second.
So you're going to put an outdoor walk-in freezer as part of this property too?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. So we have to see dimensions and plans for that too?
Absolutely.
Yeah, it's a six by six, it's located in the site plan. It's not dimensioned off of the building, it's just located off of the existing two walls. So we can update that in order to show exactly dimensions off of hard structure.
Okay, I sent you my email there, do you see it?
Yep.
Okay.
Got it.
The walk-in freezer that is outside behind the building?
Yes.
What is that space currently?
They currently, Francis, you can add on this, but they have interior freezers.
No, the, the space for the freezer is gonna go, the six by six freezer.
It currently faces the back door of the entrance of the, there's about twelve feet between where the freezer is going to go and our back door.
Now, doesn't that have to be built on some sort of a concrete platform?
Yeah, it will be put on a slab on grade. So a concrete slab, which will be the same footprint of the freezer.
All right.
So the site plan is just showing where it will be located. And then the building permit plans and construction plans will give information on that slab.
Okay, so we don't need all of that.
Okay, yeah, we will, we plan on providing a full set to the building department, but you would also like to have a planning board see, get this set?
We would definitely.
Yes, yes.
Yep.
That would be subject to approval by the building inspector.
Yes.
Exactly.
And are there locks involved with these freezers too?
Yes, yes.
You know, that, that would have to be checked also.
What I'm getting at is looking at the plans and that freezer is in an outdoor space and that's in between the two buildings, is there a bit of courtyard there?
There is, there's a courtyard there.
The back alley, so it comes in.
So there's the driveway and then right, there's a courtyard and then there's an entrance into two other businesses, yeah, back there.
Oh, okay, A zero zero is the site plan.
You want to see the other one? Okay.
Yeah, that'll give, because that's more of just a floor plan really.
This is what you're looking at?
The freezer is, oh, there it is.
What is that?
Invert at sanitary, what is, is that? So the, the sewer Suffolk County Department of Public Works would like a formed invert at the sanitary, so what Suffolk Department of Public Works, the Sewer District likes, they require that any grease-producing sewer sewage goes through the grease trap and then anything that's non-grease uh, for uh, generating just goes straight into the sewer line, so your, some of your sinks, your typical sanitary lines, they all just go straight into the sewer line, but what the Department of Public Works would like to have is a formed invert, which allows them to inspect the actual sewage going straight into the sewage, the sewage line that doesn't have to go through the grease trap. So it's essentially just a, a clean-out, a large clean-out that's just concrete, precast concrete and placed in line with the sewer line and then you see where we have to route the grease trap because of the little cutout due to this strange property size. And the grease trap will be located in the parking lot that is on the property for this with two sampling manholes and then its proximity to the other grease traps. This parking lot is somewhat of Swiss cheese, as I like to say, but.
Right.
Uh, the sewer, the sewer department is demanding fifteen hundred gallon grease traps for any, any grease-producing business.
Right, very, very stringent about that.
Yeah, which I, I completely understand and respect, it's just some places it gets tough when you get into more urban, urban density areas.
Okay, so uh, like you said, you're.
Yeah, what about a dumpster?
The dumpsters, if you can see on the, there's a shared dumpster.
It's a shared. Not true you have our own dumpster.
Yeah, this says it's a shared dumpster, but it's not, we actually have our own dumpster that is serviced by
Winter Brothers.
Winter Brothers, yeah.
Because do you deal with a lot of paper products? You know, paper plates?
We do not, we do not, a lot of paper, it's mostly for the cardboard and the stuff that comes in from our produce and and, but we do have a service, we've had it since we've opened in two thousand and eighteen for winter, for with, with Winter Brothers.
Is that dumpster enclosed?
It is not enclosed. There are, there's a dumpster there for hair stories, there's our dumpster and there's one other. It's kind of in an alleyway, yeah.
So it's, it's, it's not even public view at all.
No, it's not.
And that's, again, that's, I've seen they're rolled out on the street into the morning, it's too tight for the truck to get back there, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay. You okay with that, Rich?
Yeah.
All right.
What about the signage?
Oh, yes.
There's no change.
New board. Have you gotten that approval for your sign from them?
That was approved last year.
You did get approved?
Yes, the awning, yeah, everything was approved last year.
Great. All right, um. I have no other questions.
Is there any lighting that we should be aware of?
No, just the, the building lighting that's underneath the awning, it's covered by the awning.
Okay.
We don't have any neon lights or anything like that.
You're going to put.
Your vet code.
You're going to need some lighting by your dumpster, that, right?
There's the building lighting there.
Sorry, not dumpster.
By the refrigeration.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we also have cameras back there and we have cameras in the front.
Okay, all right. Okay, has anybody else had any questions?
I don't know, is this something that goes to the trustees?
It does.
It will, yes.
Right. So of course, um, we're going to mention in the letter that, you know, contingent to the approval or the installation of the approved stuff. And subject to the building inspector's approval of the installation of the walk-in freezer. Okay, it'll also mention the hours of operation and the seating requested of thirty-eight. And the fact that we rate services provided. And of course, you got to go to trustees as we talked about.
Yep.
Anybody else have any questions?
Yes, sir.
All right.
All very much for your time, have a good evening and be safe.
Yes.
Thank you too.
Hi, everybody.
Take care.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. How about Mr. Perillo?
Trying.
Who do we have in the, in the?
You could have Mr. Rodriguez somewhere.
I do have one other person that joined via the phone, six two zero two five five eight, can you identify yourself? No, I believe it's same person.
I know we have one seventy-three Melbury on, right? Still on?
Is that Mr.?
Mr. All.
Yeah. Yep, I will add him now.
Are we going to table Rodriguez?
We, we don't know yet, we haven't gotten there.
Okay.
And Jim, I don't know, so I messaged that Danica Chitino is here now?
I didn't see that, okay, thank you.
So do you want to go to number six first, or do you want to go back to Billy Fongans?
Let's go to the number six, since he's been here a little longer, so.
I'm going to add Mr. and Mrs. All and Mr. Palladino, the engineer, is also the engineer for this project, so I'm going to add them all in, three of them.
Okay, thank you.
So we're at one seventy-three Mallberry, Melbury, right?
That's correct.
Mr. All? Hello?
Hello.
Hey, Beth, Beth, could you just tell us what you'd like to do here?
Uh, yes, we, we had a, an approved uh, uh, plan and building permit and we want to move the location of the garage to uh, well, where it's present location on what you should be seeing on your screen, I think. Uh, Vin, Vin Palladino, are you still here?
Yep, I'm here.
All right, um, are they seeing what we're seeing?
Yeah, yeah, we're seeing that, um, I could kind of go into it, so.
Okay.
There was a previously approved site plan and building permit issued for a garage on the south end of the property. Um, after kind of further review of setbacks and what we can fit. That also, the south end garage had a wraparound driveway in order to not get an additional curb cut driveway going across the front of the property. Since then, we've realized that we can squeeze in the garage as shown on this plan that you see on the screen with just a slight addition to the driveway. So we are looking for site plan approval for the driveway change, which is just the addition of um, two hundred fifty square feet of driveway, which was significantly less than what was previously approved for the last design.
I think that.
And we won't need. I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
We, we won't need the second curb cut then either. Uh, the, the curb cut can basically remain the same and where it is now.
Right. The site plan, it was just up, I believe. Want me to do that again, Jim? Yeah, I think it's, I think that's accurate. I think that's an older rendition of it. That looked, um. See the amount of space that you're adding there in front of the garage looks like four fifty?
Yes, there, that, that is, that is the older one, if we can jump onto my screen, if I can actually get out of this, I have a full screen, um, I have it in front of me.
So. Kevin, can we have a participant share the screen?
Yes, he's in as a panelist now, so he should be able to say.
Okay, okay, great, thank you.
Swap shared screen with video, is that how I click it?
Now that, you should be able to share now on the bottom.
Okay, start video. Virtual record, sorry, I don't see. Unless I'm already sharing it.
No, bottom of your screen, the green button, share screen.
There we go. The question is which screen we'll be sharing?
Should bring up a list of your open programs.
Yep, that's beautiful, okay, there we go.
There we go.
Okay. So, yeah, so originally the approved garage was somewhat in this location um, with the wraparound driveway coming all the way around to get the additional curb cut to give access. But in order to avoid that, we have shifted the garage to this portion. And then just extended the driveway to allow the radius to turn into the garage with a single sixteen-foot sixteen-foot garage door over here, so it's a one point five car garage.
Okay.
And then there is also a breezeway connecting to the existing building, existing home.
And there's an existing two-car, is there existing garage also there?
Yes, there's existing garage there, two-car.
That staying as a garage?
Correct, yeah.
Okay, so we're adding a two hundred fifty square feet of additional asphalt, right?
Correct.
Any proposed drainage in front of that garage to uh, keep water going into the garage?
Uh, well, it pitches, the, the entire driveway has a pitch down towards the, to the east, uh, looking up the screen.
Uh huh.
And just get this in this direction, backwards that way. So the plan is to just maintain that pitch, so the water will continue in this direction down, so there will be a slight, a slight slope up to the driveway to allow water away from the structure.
And it'll drain back on the property.
Yes, exactly.
Okay. Any additional lighting on the structure?
Eric, do you have any plans for lighting on it? I just assumed we'd probably have a pendant light on each side of the entrance and maybe a, a spot, a motion spotlight above the actual garage door.
Yep, I was figuring on minimal lighting, uh, maybe one above the garage door on a motion detector. And uh, that, that's about it. I like it to get dark at night.
Just so it's shielded as, as not to shine into your neighbor's yard if possible?
Yeah.
And make side. Okay.
Now, Kim, does this property need a variance for side?
Your, your side yard, this is A eleven, correct?
We should be within our, our right of way with the, I think fifteen feet is the side yard requirement and thirty or thirty-five is the front yard.
Uh, A resident, A eleven?
Thirty-five, yes, front.
Total side yard of thirty?
Yes, and there's fifty on one side at where the, where the garage is and then fifteen, uh, twenty is where we're providing on this.
Okay.
Okay.
Okay, um. Anybody else have any questions?
Well, I was just curious, but there's only going to be the one curb cut now, is that correct?
That is correct.
So had you discussed this with Skip?
It's an existing curb cut.
Oh, so, but I mean, I was thinking, had it been discussed with Skip to do the other curb cut, that now that's not necessary.
Well, I believe in our letter, we would have said that it should have been coordinated with the Superintendent of Highways. And the fact that it's been done, it should be fine now, you know, it's just going to be an apron, single apron, single apron to the property.
Okay, so curb cut, not necessary, okay.
Right.
CBA approval needed for a second garage though?
Um. I don't see why. We have, have, out there with two or three garages, you know, I mean, you know, bake, you know? It's been the setback, um. What is the lot to the south of you for? What is that? Is it just a vacant lot or?
Yes, it's a vacant lot, a vacant grass lot, uh, and it has eight boat slips in it, that's kind of uh, an associated or needed docking for some of the homes.
Okay. Could you stop sharing your screen for one moment, if you don't mind? Thank you. I'll just give everybody a feel for what we're talking about here. This is on the south side. This is the the house, what we're talking about. And this is the view that we're talking about here.
So lovely neighborhood.
Very nice.
Thank you.
How old is that shot?
Uh, I would say that's probably two years old.
Okay. I noticed the other day that was by there, the plants are much bigger.
Yes, I was going to say, the only thing different is the plant, the plants have filled in.
They have a habit of doing that.
Yeah, I think more than you want to.
Sometimes, yes. Usually the one you want to grow big just doesn't.
Yep.
Any other?
No, I, I think that's it, so, Tim, uh, for the sake of the minutes here, we, we're just going to give this approval?
We will.
Okay.
We have to wait to seven days for the, uh, anybody that wants to write in? Yes.
Public comment?
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you. Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you, everybody, have a good night.
Yes, you too, thank you.
Thanks, Ben.
Thank you.
Who are we missing? We're going to go back to.
No, we, Perillo, we, so what do we do with Perillo?
I do have Christina Perillo in the waiting room now. So I have to go back to, I have Danica Chitino on item number three, and Christina Perillo on item number one. As well as members for item number seven, Mr. Rodriguez.
So Mr. Perillo, can we try him again, see if he's made any progress?
Joining now. Okay, we, Christina Perillo, we have you on audio. Oh, she muted. Can I take a guess that they enlisted the help of the?
Now do it.
There you go. You're on.
Hello? You made it. Okay. So you're here tonight because you want to expand your opening of your driveway, correct?
Yes, correct.
So you want to increase the opening to twenty feet at the maximum at this point?
Yes, we do, we do like it, we agree to.
I'm sorry?
Yes, we do like it, to increase it.
Increase it to twenty feet, okay. Increase it to 20 feet, okay. That's acceptable.
The, just the apron, right?
The apron, right.
Okay.
The rest of the driveway is staying the same dimension?
Uh, it's going to, yes, if you see there, you have the plants, right?
Yeah.
It's right here, right? Hold on.
Hello, Mr. Perillo?
Hello.
So we were just talking with your wife, you wanna increase the apron to 20 feet, correct? And what are you doing with the rest of the driveway? Anything?
Just, as you can see, it's kinda curved. To the, uh, it kinda curves to the left towards the house and what we wanna do is straighten it out on the left side as you're looking at the house. And straighten it out on the right side. So basically it'll be a straight driveway right to the apron instead of having, um, to kind of bend over to, uh, curve over to the left as it is now.
So you're gonna make the whole driveway wider?
Yes, it'll be, uh, wider, uh, in that we, if you look at the, uh, where the lawn meets the driveway on the left side. Um, that lawn area will kind of, uh, come straight off the house and, um, it'll be more of a rectangular shaped driveway.
So it's not gonna go in front of the house at all, correct? It's gonna go from the corner?
Yes, actually it'll, uh, it'll be, um, um, probably about two feet off the, uh, right side of the house, but it won't be in front of the house at all.
And the surface will be?
Asphalt with a Belgium block border.
So since we're increasing the, the amount of asphalt or hardscape that you're gonna be putting down, we're gonna look for drainage. So the, you can drain it by pitching it to the sides, so the Belgium block would have to be flush, or you could add, uh, some drainage in the, in the front. To collect the water that runs off the surface.
So in other words, for me to, uh, take about another foot or 18 inches on the left side of the driveway, you want drainage?
That's the state law.
Correct.
You have to.
Said you were gonna straighten it out and increase the asphalt, correct?
Uh, yes.
The other option is to crown it so that it goes into your landscaped areas.
Okay.
But you would have to have a flush border at that point.
I see. All right, well, you know what? How about if we just leave it the way it is, okay? Good night.
Do you?
Happy customer.
Okay.
So what, how should we put that? No decision?
Yeah.
No decision.
Decision or they withdrawing it?
Uh, well, they withdrew.
Oh, so that's, okay.
Okay. Let's go to Lily, Lily Flanagan.
Heading Danica now.
Hello?
Hello?
Danica? Oh, hello.
Hi guys, this is Wayne, Danica's husband. Uh, we're using her computer.
All right, what are you doing, Wayne?
How you guys doing?
What do you wanna do here?
Uh, we, what am I looking at? Okay, so the front of Lily Flanigan's, which on Deer Park Avenue. We want to put a low wall, I can't see the measurements here, it's like, uh, 18 inches high. Down a property with a couple of piers and put seating between the outside wall and the street.
Okay.
Uh, the only thing missing off of this drawing would be railing between the piers, but, uh, we will get back to you guys with drawings on that, options on that.
Let me ask you, are you gonna have an warning over this seating, seated area or umbrellas?
Uh, probably neither, maybe umbrellas if they're badly needed, but right now nothing. Just a wall coming off the north end, a wall coming off the south end and a straight wall up with a couple of piers. I think there's one, two. Seven or eight piers.
And, um, you're gonna add any lighting?
There's already existing lighting there which should suffice, I think. If we need lights, uh, we can add them. I don't think we will. I don't think it's gonna be a nighttime operation either. It's just good weather, evening time, nighttime is, I don't think it will suit. We really don't, not looking to have people out there at nighttime.
Okay.
Right now, right now it's grassy, it's grass and it's, uh, I guess shrubbery you call it, but if you look at it, people cut the corner. And walk on there, there's no point, I mean, we're trying to maintain it, but it's terrible.
You mentioned there was seven or eight, I think there's, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10, 10 piers. Are we gonna reduce it or is it the 10?
No, I, I probably counted wrong. I was looking at the drawing line.
That's what I figured, but I just wanna make sure.
Yeah.
So how many tables would that be that you have out there then?
I'm not, is there tables on the drawing? No, right?
No.
I mean, you'd have, we can come back with a table plan after the fact. I guess you'd have to look at it afterwards.
Okay, um.
I don't know how many.
The tables actually would go to, you'd go to the trustees for the.
Yeah, I don't think, uh, it depends on the size of the table, I guess.
Right, right.
Uh, I think we would, we'll be looking to put some like potted plants down the middle too, so I don't think too many tables.
So when you go to the board of trustees, you'll have to tell them how many tables?
I will have, uh, somebody draw a seating plan for the trustees.
Okay.
And I will also have a couple of options for railings for you guys, but that's further down the line. We're not ready for that, uh, right yet. Basically, we wanna level it because if you're walking, I don't know if any of you guys have ever walked up along there, it's up and down. Basically make it level with the sidewalk, take the grass out and put down, I guess what you'd consider like a patio brick, just a generic brick, make it flat and, uh, build a wall. Dividing, making it private.
Yeah, understandable. Make it look nice.
It should, I mean, right now, I mean, right now the whole thing basically I guess needs a facelift, but that would be a good start.
All right, I think we all agree, right?
Yes.
So where we, because that's in your front yard setback, we would ask you to go to the ZBA as well as the trustees.
Yeah. Yep.
And. So we would basically say, you know. It's within reason for what we see. Uh, we would recommend the ZBA for the piers and everything to be built in the front yard setback. And the board of trustees for the approval for any seating that's gonna take place there. And that's where we would be at, at this point. Does anybody else wanna add anything? Oh, we asked about the existing, the lighting is existing, existing.
You're looking at it right, like when you're moving the camera right there, there's lights up there. I don't know if you can see them from here.
But that's. Basically looking for lighting to, to be shielded so it doesn't shine into the street and.
Yeah, right now the, the lighting is, I think it's called goose neck lighting. It shines back into the building.
Yeah, that's.
Yeah. And like I said, I don't think, we won't have people probably sitting out there after dark.
Existing lighting, okay.
One of the members that, uh, board members that asked about your dumpster, is your dumpster enclosed? We didn't have a picture of that.
Our dumpster is enclosed, yep.
Okay, great. Uh, anybody else have any questions?
Well, everybody's been enjoying your food truck.
Not today.
Not today?
No.
Um, the food truck is temporary, I guess, I guess.
Yes, yeah.
And, uh. Okay. So do you look to be doing this work now or after the food truck moves?
Well, I guess finances dictate, probably not now. We, the plan was for now, but I, I think it's probably gonna be, uh, pushed back a little bit.
All right, that's where we're at.
So what, what do I have to do next?
We just wait for our letter?
Okay.
You get on the ZBA calendar?
Okay.
There you go to trustees.
Excellent.
Okay.
And there's no new signage or anything, right?
No, not them.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. Keep safe, Wayne.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, guys.
Yeah, good luck.
I, well, I'm sorry.
Yep.
The, um, so it's definitely gonna be table service out there. There isn't gonna be like people standing out with drinks in their hands and stuff like that, right?
This is, this is not, uh, a nightclub scenario. This is definitely dining.
Okay.
Yep.
That was my only question, thank you.
Absolutely, yep.
Sounds good.
Good luck to you, Wayne.
Thank you very much, guys.
Good, thank you.
Bye bye.
Okay. We're back to number two. 450 far out heavy, anybody there, Kevin?
No, Mr. Mills not here.
All right, so I'm a little, I'm bouncing around here. I believe the next person would be.
Stowe.
Mr. Rodriguez?
Yep, we have Eric Rodriguez and Kevin O'Brien. I'm gonna add them now.
Great, thank you.
I get to see into everybody's private spaces, this is kind of interesting, huh?
You know, I had to move for a few minutes because all of a sudden my phone just going down, I had to bring the charger out.
Um, they're, they're both in. I'm not sure if they're joining via video or just audio, but they're both here.
Good evening, uh, am I, uh, did I unmute it correctly?
You're unmuted, yep.
Okay, perfect.
And who am I speaking? I'm sorry.
Uh, this is, uh, this is Kevin O'Brien. Uh, just, uh, I just say good evening and, uh, Mr. Chairman and honorable members of the board and. I, I think, uh, I'm very impressed and, and pleased that the board was able to, uh, together meeting like this, uh, you know, where we can't get together, you know, personally, but business still getting done, so kudos to whoever put this thing together and made it happen. That's, uh, that's, uh, much appreciated.
Thank you and thank you for your patience because it's been a little bumpy, but we're getting there. Okay. Want to explain what you like?
Sure, if, um, uh, if you wouldn't mind, I'd just like to give a little bit of background. So the, I mean, the nature of the application itself is, uh, we're seeking to, uh, maintain, uh, a driveway that was reconfigured, uh, at the subject premises. I gotta just take you back a little bit. And I think there might have been a hearing, you know, quite some time ago in connection with this, and I guess I just would be. And whatever was submitted at that hearing being incorporated here. But, uh, just, I'll try not to bore you with too much background, but Mr. Rodriguez purchased the premises back in 2008. First time home buyer, uh, thought he was doing the right thing, got engineers to look at the place. It's at 35, uh, Stowe Avenue, uh, which is on the corner of Stowe and Belger. And if you're familiar with the roadway. From, from north to south and from south to north. Where his particular piece of property is like a V, so he's in the actual lowest point in the roadway over there. So, uh, unfortunately unbeknownst to him, when he purchased the premises, uh, it had a sort of a grading and a, uh, drainage, uh, problem. And, uh, he had, uh, a number of incidents, uh, from the day he bought it to 2014. Uh, a number of incidents where there'd be, uh, tremendous water intrusion onto his property. The other unfortunate thing was if you take the crown of the roadway to his foundation, there was a deficit of about 11 inches. So if he did have, uh, a flooding situation, a problem, uh, it would back into, uh, his, uh, into its foundation. Uh, I met with Skip personally, we went around and, you know, uh, he explained to me, you know, uh, and it, drainage is much more sophisticated than I, than I. Knew or imagined. And he explained how all this water comes down, actually even from north of Sunrise Highway. Down into this, uh, into this particular area. And the village has been doing all kinds of work to, uh, try and address, you know, some of these, uh, situations. And I think the breaking point, uh, for, uh, Mr. Rodriguez was somewhere around 2014 where he wound up with two and a half feet worth of water. Into his, into his house. So what he wound up doing, uh, was, uh, taking what was the existing garage, uh, converting that and, uh, building a, a new garage on the side of the property. And in speaking with his architects and, uh, the engineers who were looking at the water problems and intrusion and the contractor. Basically, they said what you should do is, uh, uh, redo, uh, the driveway, which would be. On what would be sort of the western side of the property towards, uh, Belger, uh, and. Regrade by the, uh, house, uh, where there was an 11, uh, inch deficit. And regrade that to, you know, uh, increase that and slope it and pitch it back down towards the, uh, uh, towards the driveway. So, uh, that was done. The, uh, the one-story garage, uh, was built, uh, the work completed. Uh, let's see, CO. Number 20 dash 0043, uh, was issued. I'm sorry, March 9th of 2020, this, this year, uh, so, so that was issued. But, uh, pursuant to section, uh, let's see, it's, um, uh, let's see, 365, there 64H. Uh, of the zoning ordinance, uh, uh, planning board approval is required for, uh, any reconfiguration, uh, of, of the driveway. So that's, uh, that, that's, that's really the, the basis of why, of why we're here. And since he reconfigured that driveway and pitched it differently. I'm not gonna say that all the, the stormwater drainage problems in that particular pocket, you know, have gone away. But I can say, uh, with a degree of certainty, that the intrusion into the house. Uh, has never occurred since then and he's never had water go up. Say more than perhaps, you know, six feet from the curb line. Uh, so, so that, so that actually. You know, at least with respect to defensive measures which were recommended by the, uh, engineer. Seem to address, uh, that problem. So we're here looking, you know, for, for the board's, you know, favorable recommendation, you know, in connection with this. And like I, like I said. You know, the problem that previously exists with respect to water, water intrusion has, uh, has gone, has gone away.
So, so the driveway, so he built the driveways. Already. Or he didn't take, so what is the, what is the change?
So basically, uh, the change really is in the pitch. Uh, so where previously, uh, the driveway, um, was. Like I said, so if you take where it says Stowe Avenue right there, right in that center line, uh, and then if you went to where the driveway, where, where the driveway. The westernmost one meets the foundation, there was an 11-inch deficit. So. So what was, what was done was the old concrete was ripped out. It was, the grade was changed and elevated and new concrete put in, in that area.
And it pitches towards the street or towards his green area?
Well, I, I think, you know, it may be.
Green area and street.
Yeah.
When he built the garage, you said they just got the CO in 2020 for the garage?
Yes, yeah, just, just was, was just issued just, just recently.
So the planning board and, and the code really doesn't allow for two driveways. That's where he comes in with this issue here. And there's no parking between the street line and the house unless it's a garage. So this, the driveway to the north, it's just kind of like goes into the old space.
And the planned driveway too.
I'm sorry, Rich?
The plan would indicate it's what new driveway two.
Right.
So the, so the old, okay, so the original garage would be by what? If I'm just, let me just make sure I have my bearings correct here. I guess that would be sort of the orderly side. So, so on that corner by Bulger Street and where that, so that's where the, that's where the attached garage previously existed. And, you know, so, so that was converted to living area and the detached garage built. So, so that, but basically the driveway remained. So where there was previously a driveway to, to, to the, to the existing dwelling, you know, you know, so you might say to yourself, well, why would you put a driveway over there? Well, that's where the garage was. So, so the garage was in that spot. And like I said, the, the biggest problem over there was, was the, was the water intrusion. And, you know, by doing this, it seemed to cure the problem. It's my understanding. I mean, he has the hundred feet of street frontage over there. There's, you know, the, a lot of green space, A, which is on, both on his property as well as I guess would be the, it's, it's green space, albeit he doesn't technically own it because it's that, that area that's probably owned between, by the village between the actual curb line and the property lot.
Correct. So just so I'm clear, this would represent the original driveway and garage, correct? And that's part of the original structure. So this became livable area now. And then you constructed this new garage and this driveway and you left this old driveway there.
Correct. And, and what it was though, it was pitched, regraded. So that area didn't get the, see that, I mean, elevation wise, the northern end of the property is, you know, is, has a little bit of a depressed elevation.
I don't think Jim was saying, no, I don't think we have any issue with the grading. It's the, the paved area that the prob, that presents the problem.
And two driveways as well.
Well, that's what I meant.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Well, what if we, you know, if it's an aesthetic, you know, could we landscape on the, the sides of it to soften the aesthetic?
No. What we'd recommend is that you'd go to the ZBA to get approval for a second driveway.
Okay.
If you don't want to remove it.
Okay, so there's, there's no whether, there's nothing we could do here, even, like I said, it's not even so much, I mean, I could not park cars on it or, or buffer something towards the street line so as to, you know, the concept is not so much for car parking as it was, it really was a protective measure utilizing what was an existing driveway. So I mean, if the board wanted a condition to say, hey, no, no, no parking on, on that. I mean, I don't believe my client would have a problem with that. Like I said, the, 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 the desired result, which actually wound up happening is the fact that he doesn't have the water intrusion the way he used.
But that's, that's a product of grading, not necessarily the paving.
Or a combination of the two.
Why don't you just remove the driveway and, and grade the ground?
Right.
Why'd you spend the money to put more concrete in? And now you're not going to use it for parking? What's, what's the sense in that?
I think that was the recommendations of the contractor and the architect when, when they were in the construction phase of it. And, and, and in part, I think with the recommendation of the engineer seeing what they could do, you know, you know, when unfortunately on occasion, you know, this area because of the fact that the road pitches down from one angle, the road pitches on the other angle. As I said, I met with Skip. There was some question about, there's a drainage basin right across the street and whether it properly drains or, or not. And he had indicated that, you know, on the other side, because it's like a little creek on the, on the other side where everything drains into, that there was some roots and stuff growing at the end. And that it indicated that they had removed some of those roots to, to improve that. Nevertheless, you know, when you have big rains, that area still has a tendency to, to flood in that pocket. And, you know, this, this addressed that problem, which was obviously a major, major problem. Like I said, if there's anything we could do with reasonable conditions, I'm sure my client would be amenable to, to reasonable conditions. And I mean, as far as second driveways are concerned, you know, I have photographs and about 39 other homes, you know, some in close proximity, some in not so close proximity with secondary, secondary driveways. But like I said, I'm.
That would be information for the ZBA, the Zoning Board of Appeals. Where they have the ability to make an exception, give you a variance for the piece of property in the second driveway. We, we live and die by the code here. The code doesn't allow for the second driveway. That's not saying, you know, there aren't some out there as you stated.
No. The, the issue is two curb cuts, correct? Essentially?
Yeah. And, and of course, the way the code is written, parking a car between the front, from the street and to front of the house without a garage.
In addition to increased stormwater runoff on a, and a hardpan surface. I mean, his own, his own videos showed that when I watched him today, you could clearly see the rain flowing right down that driveway into the street. You know, we, we want hardscape removed as much as possible so that your stormwater stays on your land. It's, it percolates through the soil and, you know, doesn't drain into the street. That's state code.
That, that, we've been tasked with stormwater management for people to keep their stormwater on their property.
Understood, you know, and that's, you know, once again, I think a condition, I mean, there's a couple, I think there's a couple of options. He could either, where the actual curb cut is, fill in the curb cut so that this way, you know, you're not accessing, you're not driving, but you still afforded that sort of protection. A line drain could be put down towards the end if there's a concern for off-site water intrusion. So I, I, I think there's, you know, a couple of different options or methods that could hopefully accomplish both goals of meeting the village's goals at the same time, meeting his goal of just trying to keep water out of his house.
So let's discuss that. You would cut back on the driveway from the curb line back towards the house? How far?
Well, what?
What he's suggesting is we would rebuild the curb so there would be no curb cut.
But the driveway would remain?
The driveway would remain.
Yes, since it's there already. I could also put a drain. So rebuilding the curb cut, putting the drain would satisfy your water intrusion. Your water runoff is concerns. And then rebuilding the curb, therefore without the curb cut, it's technically not a driveway anymore, I believe.
Well.
Still needs ZBA. It's a second driveway. It's, it's, it's a source of runoff. And, you know.
Well, again, we could put a zip drain or a French drain across the bottom of the driveway. And it could run off into a well, which in my area, it's, it doesn't even make sense to do that because as soon as you dig, once you hit about 18 to 24 inches, you're at water. So I could do it, but I, I think it's pointless.
You know.
No work there.
Mr. Rodriguez? I think you have, you know, a good case, and I think you need to plead this to the ZBA going forward. They have the ability to give you a variance for this or find a happy medium.
Okay.
You know?
So we can't accomplish anything tonight?
Other than pushing you in the right direction as, as you're moving along with the information you've gathered and plead your case to the ZBA. Would be our, our recommendation to you at this point.
We don't have the authority to give the approval. We're just looking at what the code says. And the code says is two drivers are not allowed. So we're here to, you know, give you the facts of the code. And if you want an exception, that's where the ZBA comes in. So it's the process that you have to go through us first to get that indication. And then you go to the ZBA.
So you can, yeah.
Could I just ask one more question? And I understand where you're, you're, you're going and I appreciate that. So how would we, because I, I know Mr., it was suggested possibly, you know, not having a curb cut, you know, putting the curving back or what have you. How do you define a driveway? Because if, I'm curious, if we put the curb back and there's, and it's not a driveway, then, then it's.
But it's still paving the right of way.
Can? Yeah, okay, I, okay, I understand that. Okay, that makes.
Can I ask you just one more question? I'm curious about when the garage that was there has been put into living space now? Is that correct?
That's correct.
All right. So you had to go to the board. Somebody had to approve those plans. Is that right?
They were approved.
A building permit was filed, building permit was issued, and the CO was ultimately issued, but they did indicate this. So, so that aspect, it was, it was approved.
Yes, but usually when you convert a garage into living space, I think part of it, isn't it explained that you can't have the driveway anymore? I, I thought that was my understanding.
When, when we were doing the construction and the rebuild after the flood of 2014, myself, the engineer, contractor, anytime we had questions, we would call the Village of Babylon and we would speak with Deborah Longo. Deborah Longo said, as long as we meet two parameters, we could have two driveways. And those two parameters were your property had to be 100 foot wide, which mine is, and you had to have a certain amount of green space. We did the calculations and I had more than enough green space. So.
You can't count the right of way though.
What's that?
You cannot count the right of way in that calculation.
And that would be for circle driveway?
Yeah, I was going to say, it sounds like she was referring to a circular driveway.
Okay, don't.
And I, I remember 2014, that was that terrible rain we had in August. That was terrible. And I remember how you were flooded there. It was, it was bad. So I can, I think we can all appreciate your concern. But like everybody stated, we, like Jim said, we live by the code.
And everyone on the panel is aware that the flooding conditions still exist on Stowe Avenue, right? Correct?
Yes.
Absolutely. It's, um.
I have, I have photos and videos of this past Saturday where it was flooded this past Saturday.
Yes.
You know, we have, we have a serious drainage issue and all this was done to protect myself and my family.
We're not unsympathetic about your, your plight.
Yeah. Well, absolutely, because that was terrible. But I think to protect yourself, as we've said, you have to go to the zoning, zoning board of appeals and just finalize it that way and see if they're sympathetic and appreciate the circumstance that you find yourself in.
Absolutely.
Yeah, because we, we just can't, that the purpose, it would defeat the purpose of this board.
Just for discussion purposes, assuming we go to the zoning board, the COs may approve it. Do we have to come back to the planning board or is that it?
No.
They, they won't supersede us.
Yeah. You're done. You're finished. And, and to be honest, if you ever wanted to sell the house, that would come up as a big issue if you didn't get it approved. So you have to protect yourself at all ways here. So, you know, but just make an application to go to the zoning board with this. And Jim will send a letter to you and which goes to the zoning board, which will state, you know, things that we discovered.
Sure.
The zoning board consists of different panelists, not you, not.
Yeah, it's not us.
And do you, do you, does this panel send a letter of?
We would send a, a letter of denying the, the second driveway, stating some of the facts that you talked about here as far as the flooding and why you're doing it. And our recommendation, we would appeal to the zoning board of appeals for their relief of the zoning.
So you would make a recommendation to the zoning board?
We would make a recommendation to you that you would, should apply to the zoning board.
Zoning board.
You're being, you're going to get a, a letter of denial and then the letter, then you would, to, to, you would appeal that denial to the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
Okay, understood.
Okay. Yeah, and, and believe me, we're all sympathetic, you know, I, I personally remember that horrible flooding. It was awful. You know?
Yes, I know. We were displaced for two years.
Yes.
I can't tell you how much money I had to spend to rebuild.
I mean, it was, it was awful. I, what was it? 12 inches of rain we got in three or four hours. That was horrible. So, so protect yourself and go to the, the zoning board of appeals.
Okay.
All right. All right.
Thank you.
Good luck.
All right, good luck, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Thank you for your consideration.
Stay blessed.
Bye-bye.
Kevin, anybody else in the queue?
There is nobody else here.
All right, that's a wrap.
It's a wrap.
Number one.
All right, we're still being recorded, right Kevin?
We're still number one.
Kill the recording?